Hello.
This is...
I am Michael Rocha.
Mikey is gonna step in today for the new mayor. They figured that the five dollars they're giving me a year wasn't enough, so Mikey's actually gonna get ten bucks a year and he's taking over now for the rest of the year. So, he's stepping in.
Yes, I am.
Alright, we're glad to have you. We're gonna call the meeting to order. This is Welcome to the November 1st Meeting of the Lake Forest City Council. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Honorable James Cowie.
Here.
Alderman Grumhouse.
Here.
Alderman Novit.
Here.
Alderman Woodman.
Here.
Alderman Moore.
Here.
Alderman Marsh.
Here.
Alderman Schoenheider.
Here.
Alderman Luby.
Here.
Alderman Palmer.
Here.
Nine present, no absent, Mr. Mayor, we have a quorum.
Thank you. Please join me in a pledge allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our first order of business this evening is report to city officers. And we have certainly our distinguished guest this evening, as we just announced, our mayor for the day, a sixth grade student from the School of St. Mary, Mikey Rocha. And I do have to divulge that I didn't know this was gonna happen tonight, that Mikey was gonna be here, but Mikey is also my godson, so I have a little bit of inside story here that I have to tell, so welcome tonight, and maybe in twenty years you can actually sit here and do the real thing, so keep working at it. We also have another distinguished guest. I have State Senator Susan Garrett here this evening, and we'd like to have you come on up. I know you have a great announcement for us this evening, so come on up and tell us the good news.
Well, it's always a pleasure to be here. Congratulations, mayor of the evening, mayor of the day. Yes, I did receive a phone call last week that the City of Lake Forest would be receiving eight hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars for the transportation enhancement project for the Lake Forest train station. I know that you've been working on this, that Bob Kylie has submitted, I think, three applications, and the third one is the lucky charm, right? So, you have received a letter, I think, mayor, and I know, Bob Kylie, I did get a copy of that letter, confirming that the funds would be granted to the City of Lake Forest for the rehabilitation of the train station. For historic reasons, they felt it was very important, so I'm happy to announce that.
Where are these funds coming from?
They're federal. They're federal dollars. The state acts as a pass-through.
So, they're good down?
They're good to go. We won't be waiting for them for years to come. It's a very successful program, and I think Lake Forest was one of a few, certainly villages or cities in Lake County that did receive these dollars, so... And I, you know, every time I stand up here, I do wanna thank Bob, because there were three applications, and we made phone calls and wrote letters as well, but the squeaky wheel did get the grease, and I think it's for a great cause, and I'm extremely happy, and I know that people in Lake Forest will agree that this is a great project, so congratulations.
Thank you, Susan, for all your hard work and efforts, because we know that it would not have happened without all your hard work and effort, so we're very thankful for the funds, obviously, in these economic times, and I think that puts us pretty close to the dollars we're looking for. How far are we...
Well, actually, I might ask Karina Walters to come forward as well. I have to give...
We got a real good start. We got a ways to go, but we got a good start.
Yeah. Well, I appreciate all the credit. Really, the credit does go to Karina and Dan Martin. They're the ones that have put this application in, as Susan said, three times now, and the third time is a charm. And Karina, I think, has a timeline there. Oh, you don't have the timeline, I have the timeline. In terms of the process and the moving forward of the renovation, as Mayor Cowie indicated, the city has budgeted a hundred and fifty thousand dollars in the current budget for some work. We also recently received two hundred and fifty thousand dollars from Metro for improvements, so we have a total of about one point two million dollars that are available for the restoration of the station. And based on the schedule you see there, we will immediately begin moving forward with not only the necessary paperwork with the state for the ITAP program, but also begin doing the engineering work that is required as part of this program, so that hopefully come early spring, we'll be able to begin moving forward. I might also add, and I believe there's representatives in the audience from the Lake Forest Preservation Foundation, we've had a lot of conversations with them, you might recall that you received a report from them on the restoration of the station. So, we'll work with them on preparing the scope of improvements that can be done with the one point two million dollars that we have, and also having further conversations about fundraising activities within the community to see if we can raise some additional monies to leverage the one point two million dollars that we currently have in hand. So, that's sort of where we stand, and, you know, we'll keep our fingers crossed that maybe there's more dollars around the corner.
Bob, might this have an impact on our lease negotiations?
It's funny you mention that, Alderman Woodman, is that, as you know, we got a one-year extension on the lease. We had submitted a red-line version some months ago. We sent them this morning the newspaper account of this, and they immediately called us back and said, "So, what is the status of the lease?" And we said, "Well, it's sitting on your desk." And of course, they couldn't find it, so Karina had to send them another copy of the draft, but our hope is, is that within the next three to six months, we will have a long-term lease in place for you to approve.
Excellent.
We've also, I might add, too, started to get some renewed interest as tenants in that building, so I hope that this will help efforts to snowball a reuse and redevelopment of that structure.
Well, it's a great start.
Yeah.
And we're very thankful for your efforts, and certainly...
It's my job, but I just think the train station's always been such a centerpiece, especially with Market Square as a backdrop, and these kinds of projects are so much, you know, I get such a good feeling coming and telling people that there's actually money coming down the pipe for something that I think would be very difficult to raise, you know, internally through the community, so congratulations again, and it's really Lake Forest staff that made this all happen, so thanks.
Thanks, Susan.
What great news. Thank you, Susan.
Given the number of roof tiles that were spread all over the parking lot in the windstorm last week, it's especially good that we got this, 'cause we needed it.
Yeah, there's not much left of that.
Right.
Our next item on the agenda this evening is a proclamation of November 1 to November 5, that 2010 is Train Safety Week, and I'd like to read a proclamation in that regard. Whereas the City of Lake Forest, as directed by the mayor, has declared pedestrian train safety as a priority, and whereas the mayor appointed a Transportation and Safety Enhancement Committee, the TSEC, comprised of public safety officials, school officials, engineers, city staff, and volunteers from the local business community, and whereas the City of Lake Forest hosted a Pedestrian Rail Safety Symposium, co-sponsored by the Northwestern University Transportation Center, and whereas the TSEC has been working closely on its mission of promoting pedestrian train safety with Operation Lifesaver, the Federal Railroad Administration, and other institutions, and whereas the Lake Forest High School students voluntarily wrote and produced the peer video and public service announcement titled Train Seption, whereas the Sea of Lake Forest and the TSEC reminds all commuters and pedestrians that all trains do not stop at every station, and to minimize use of cell phones and other electronic distractions while in the vicinity of railroad tracks. Therefore, I, as the mayor of the City of Lake Forest, proclaim November 1 through November 5, 2010, Train Safety Week, and call for its significance to the citizens of the City of Lake Forest. I entertain a motion for approval?
So moved.
All in favor?
Second.
All in favor? Alright. Motion carries. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I believe we have the young men who created Train Seption with us here this evening, if you wanna recognize them.
I certainly would. Are we gonna see the video, this...Karina, this evening? Alright? Just a little background on this video. This was...came out of discussions from our committee of the Transportation Safety Enhancement Committee, where we went to the high school and basically said, you know, there unfortunately have been pedestrian rail safety accidents at our West Side Station, and we felt, as far as the committee was concerned, that it would be appropriate if the students themselves would get together and put this video together as a peer video, that it didn't come from the committee, it didn't come from the city, but it actually was created, written, and worked on by the students themselves, and I'll tell you, we've seen a couple of clips of this. I haven't seen the full final piece, but we're extremely impressed by the talent, not only of these, of all the school kids in the high school, and I know they had another producer that helped them along the way as well, but this is a fabulous piece, not only for the message that it brings with it, certainly the rail safety and pedestrian safety, but I tell you, there's some really talented young folks in our community, and what a great job they did on this, so I'm sure you'll enjoy this.
It's seven thirty.
Yeah. Uh, hello? Is my alarm going off?
Hello?
Uh, can you see my desk, man?
Yeah, it's right here.
Alright. Sorry.
Okay, can you be on at three thirty please? I think it's been this long, and I need to pick up the app.
Yeah, no problem.
Love you, man.
Hi, man, how you doing?
That's Susan.
Hold on, still...
Hello?
Hey, can you get off my desk? I left a phone number for applying here, and I just gotta have it. I thought I had it here somewhere, and I just can't find this mess. Okay, so look it all up.
Here it is. Eight-four-seven-six-one-five.
Wait, wait, hold on, hold on. I gotta get it, we got a mess up here. Hold on, hold on. I'm sorry. Okay. Okay, great. You're a lifesaver. I got it, thanks. Okay, well, have fun with your rest tonight. I'm gonna be busy. Be safe on the train, it's been such a hassle.
Okay. Love you, too.
Come on, man, it's the first day of school. You already tired?
No, man, I just couldn't sleep last night.
Oh, were you too excited?
I sounded really bad for me.
Oh, yeah?
Yeah, but I ran a lot of trouble, but...
Come on, can't bring it up like that in that room?
Fine, yeah, I think I was falling, and I just kept falling for a long time, so I didn't figure out what to do.
That's not bad for this.
Yeah, but, I mean, it would be tough.
Okay. Me and you guys can have a beer.
Can you get your dress up? Cam?
Hey, Clay, how are ya? Uh, what's up? I haven't seen you in forever. Oh, yeah, always ready for school, right?
Well, what'd you say?
Uh, I need orders. Oh, cut off, alright. Uh, I need a French vanilla cappuccino, and I'll go get a drink, please.
Alright, I'm ready.
Uh, number, can you give me a escape cap at three point five, again, and let's, um, four, okay? Okay, man. Oh, no, okay. Love you.
Do we have to cross the tracks every day, dude?
Yeah, man, it's locked with the road.
But is it even legal?
Yeah, but I know it's not the only one you can use, though, John.
Let's go. Alright, let's go, Cam. Finally. Hey, how's it going? Hey, uh, can I get your number so I can text you something?
Do you have to dial?
Uh, yeah, we're moving, and I got lots of people in the house.
Wait, you're moving?
Yeah, it's a house, not a good house.
Yeah. I just got to know you.
Yeah. Alright, can I get my link? Sorry. Come on, Cam, let's go. Train length ten, slow on. They said three thirty, wait.
I know, so...
I wanna thank the students that worked on this film. It was Max Moore, Connor Hartnett. I know Susan Kelsey is one of the stars of the video, and also Stephen Douglas from Lake Forest Scout Stories was the coordinating producer, and would you come on up and make a few comments?
Yeah, first of all, we wanna thank you so much for the initiative and encouraging the high school students, which I have one, Hayden McAfee, who's the assistant director, who's a senior right now at the high school. A lot of the folks you saw are graduated now in film school across the nation from the high school, including Max Moore, who wrote it, directed it, and shot at his mom's in the audience here today, and he did a fantastic job. He was motivated because he had a friend. He lost a friend in fifth grade to a train accident, and that was a real, kind of a leading part for him, and he did a fantastic job, but, yeah, probably these guys, thirty-five to fifty hours of work that they put into it, and truly, they wanted to kind of give a message to their peers that weren't, wasn't so direct and straightforward, but really made them think, and kind of started dialogue instead of it just being kind of very clear-cut. And from the initial month and a half that we've been showing it, that's kind of what happens, and that's kind of what we're most proud of, so, yeah.
You did a fantastic job, and I know, I mean, the thing that really, that, one, it's very moving and very touching, and you get the message across, but one, it also came from, again, your own creation and your own time and effort. No one, no one, no one said, "Guys, go out and do this." You went and did it on your own, you put your own time and effort into it, and you did it over the summer. It wasn't even a school project, so we really thank you for all your hard work and effort, and I think it's gonna be very effective, and we're very proud to have it kicked off this week with Train Safety Week, and I think you've done a great service for the community.
Thank you, I appreciate it. Thanks a lot for having us. Appreciate it.
Mr. Mayor, while we're on the subject of transportation, can I just mention, too, and maybe I'll ask Senator Garrett to fill in some of the blanks here, this coming Monday, we are having a meeting in Highland Park of all of the community representatives from, I think, Evanston all the way up north Chicago, Waukegan, to talk with Metro officials about where they're going with their bridge rehabilitation project. I think some of you who take the train know that that was a start and stop project, and I think there's still a lot of questions and concerns about where they're going with it, a lot of issues about single track versus triple track and so forth, and so Senators Garrett, Schoenberg, and I think Link are co-sponsoring a meeting on Monday in Highland Park with Representatives Metros and the community leaders to try and put this back on track, so to speak, and make sure that next time they come forward with plans for this rehabilitation project, which has to be done, that it has some community involvement, has some transparency to it that I think the first process didn't have, so I don't know, Susan, if you wanted to add anything to that? So, hopefully, we'll be able to have something to report back to you at your November 15th meeting.
Thank you, Bob, and I think also for those folks that commute by driving, they're thankful as well, too, because the traffic was a mess, both on the rail and vehicular traffic for once the schedules changed, so we're glad to see that there was some common sense put back into it, and that we can get this worked out over a number of years, is my understanding. The next item on the agenda this evening is a resolution of appreciation for Norman Carlson. Norm Carlson is also an individual who has worked on the Transportation Safety Enhancement Committee, and Norm is a Lake Forest resident who has extensive knowledge in the railroads and transportation, and I'd like to read the resolution of appreciation for Norm's work. Whereas Norm Carlson has volunteered his time to the City of Lake Forest as a consultant since his retirement in 2000, ably providing his expertise in the areas of transportation, and more specifically rail transportation, whereas Norm Carlson volunteers in the Lake County Community Coalition and led an effort in 2007 with the city to instigate the Sunrise Express Regional Rail Service, and whereas Norm Carlson is an active member of the mayor's Transportation and Safety Enhancement Committee, dedicated to reducing vehicular train and pedestrian train accidents by educating the public, and whereas Norm Carlson chaired a Pedestrian Rail Safety Symposium at Northwestern University, in which the City of Lake Forest was a leading participant, and whereas Norm Carlson, through his vast knowledge and experience, has helped promote the city's interest in transportation safety, and now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Lake Forest, that the council, on behalf of the administration and residents of the community, hereby express its appreciation and gratitude to Norm Carlson for a public service faithfully performed, and be it further resolved that the city clerk be and hereby is instructed to deliver a copy of this resolution duly signed by the mayor to Norm Carlson on this first day of November 2010. So, Norm's not here tonight, but I certainly...oh, you are here? Well, then, you gotta come on up here, and I think I have to sign this for you, too, then, probably, huh? If I can find it, I will.
Well, all I can say is thank you very much to everybody. It has certainly been a pleasure and an honor to work with the city on these issues. As some of you know, I'm very interested in railroads, and the concluding thing I'd like to say is that when you are around a railroad, there is nothing more important than safety, and I think we have to really be conscious of that every time we are around a train. Thank you very much.
I do have one more comment to make this evening, and that is regarding some of the comments that we received, especially the other night after our town hall meeting. A lot of the information that came up was how do we communicate effectively with the public, and I know the city staff has been working very hard to find another method to do so, and I'd like to announce that there's a program that'll be rolling out on January 1st of this year. It's called GovQA. It's a 24/7 online system, which will be in full operation by January 1st, 2010. This is a system where residents will be encouraged to log on to the city's website, click on the Citizens' Communication Center, which will be one of the highlighted areas, where they will enter their email address. There'll be different modules of the Citizens' Communication Center, which will allow residents to receive city emails, including general city electronic newsletters or targeted information. They can view city events, they can complete surveys issued by the city. So, in general, the GovQA will allow the city staff to receive feedback on any subject at any time to improve overall service levels. Again, this is just another means and methods that we can do to communicate effectively with the residents. I wanna thank Karina, I wanna thank Susan Banks, I know certainly Bob Kylie, and a number of staff have worked on this for a long time, they've studied it, they've looked at this program, they've been to seminars to study how to use it, and we're excited to get it rolled out on January 1st. I think, again, it's just another tool that we can use to try to get information back to the residents to communicate effectively. I know that not all residents certainly use email, but I think certainly there's a vast majority of you do, and this is, again, one more tool to keep that communication flowing, so thank you, staff, for all your hard work, and we look forward to rolling this out January 1st. Those conclude my comments this evening. Next item on the agenda is comments by city manager.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor, members of the council. The first item under my agenda is a rather bittersweet agenda item. The first item under my agenda is a rather bittersweet agenda item, because this is a resolution of appreciation to a wonderful young man that I've known for a long time. And I'm going to ask Kathy Cerniak to come forward and to read the resolution and make some comments about Peter Cutant. If he looks happy, it's just because he came back from a vacation in Italy, if I remain true.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Mayor for the day. Rocha, members of the city council. It certainly is with mixed emotions that I stand here tonight in support of your recognition of Peter Cutant. Mixed emotions because we certainly miss him already. He has left a tremendous gap in the city organization. And I know I speak for myself, as well as members of the community development staff who are here tonight, but also with excitement. Pete has tremendous opportunities for growth and is ready to face all sorts of challenges. And anything he does, I'm sure that he will succeed. So it is my pleasure and my privilege to read a resolution tonight that we will be asking you to approve. Whereas Peter Arcutant has been a dedicated member of the city of Lake Forest staff since joining the community development department as a planning intern on November 17, 1997, just a few moments or a few months after I joined the department. Whereas he was thereafter promoted to the position of planner in 1998 and to the position of senior planner in 2005. Whereas during his tenure with the city, he served as staff to numerous boards, commissions, committees, and the city council, attending countless public hearings and meetings, preparing detailed staff reports, and providing articulate presentations. Whereas he authored numerous code amendments, drafted design guidelines, and supported the city's efforts in many areas, particularly in those related to historic preservation and affordable housing. Whereas his passion for the city of Lake Forest was evident in all that he did. And his understanding of the community's traditions and culture were always factored into his decision-making processes. And whereas his wealth of knowledge, refined presentation skills, political sensitivity, vision, and creativity will serve him well in all of his future endeavors. And whereas Peter Arcutant has made a lasting positive difference in the community, and the city of Lake Forest is better as a result of his service. Now therefore be it resolved by the city council of the city of Lake Forest that the council, on behalf of the plan commission, Historic Preservation Commission, Zoning Board of Appeals, Building Review Board, and the Housing Trust, and on behalf of the staff throughout the city organization and the residents of the community, hereby express its sincere appreciation and gratitude to Peter Arcutant for a public service faithfully, competently, and selflessly performed. And be it further resolved that the city clerk be and is hereby instructed to deliver a copy of this resolution duly signed by the mayor to Peter Arcutant this first day of November 2010.
So moved.
Second.
More favor?
Aye.
Motion favor?
Thank you, Kathy and Bob. Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, having grown up in Lake Forest, it truly has been an honor and a privilege to have been able to come back to this community and serve it for the past 13 years. During my time, I've had the pleasure of meeting and working with some absolutely tremendous individuals, residents, board and commission members, architects, and coworkers. And I'll take those memories with me and think back on them fondly. And so, thank you very much.
Peter, just personally, for 11 of those 13 years I've been working with you on VRB and the city council, and I just want to personally say thank you for all your hard work. You were one of those people that the waters ran quietly but deeply. And I want to thank you for all you've done for the city. It was truly my pleasure to have you working alongside of me.
Thank you all.
Peter, same. I can't, I have to mirror what's too sad. Your patience with me while I was on zone. And city council has been amazing. I just wish you best luck where you're going, but you've been appreciated in the time that I've served by everyone that I've served with. You're great. Best luck.
Thank you. Thanks.
Just want to say, Peter, thank you for all your hard work and dedication. I certainly worked with you for over 10 years, and you did a fantastic job. And I know Kathy's going to be very lonely over there without her counterpart. And we wish you the best of luck. And let me also provide you with the resolution as well.
Well, next, I'll bring up somebody who actually worked with Peter for a long time. That's not why he's here. As former chairman of our plan commission, but now the chairman of our interim Gorton Board, George Penelion, is here to bring you up to date as to the work of the interim board and where we're going. George?
Thank you, Bob. Best of luck, Peter. We definitely put in some hours together. And Peter always had a smile on his face, which was sometimes much in need. So, good luck. I have a couple of sort of prepared comments, and then I'll just be available to answer any questions that you may have. So if you'll bear with me, I don't normally do this so formally, but I thought in this circumstance, it'd be best if I read from a bit of a script. So, thank you for providing this opportunity to update the council on our progress on the Gorton Community Center. First, I'd like to say it's been an honor and a pleasure to chair this important repositioning effort for Gorton. Bob Kiley has recruited an outstanding group of board members. And I know I can speak for all of us in saying that we truly appreciate the community's ongoing confidence and support. Special thanks are due to Bob, who has taken on the normally full-time job of executive director on top of his normal full-time job, and to Nancy Novit, who has done a phenomenal job running the day-to-day operations during this interim period. Both, everybody should know, are donating their time and prodigious talents for the benefit of Gorton and for the entire community. And this is the kind of thing that really makes this a special town. So, thanks very much for the opportunity and for the sort of rapid development of camaraderie that we've experienced. Gorton is alive and well. It's continuing its mission to provide facilities, programs, and services to Lake Forest and Lake Bluff. The interim board of directors has been hard at work conducting an operational and financial review. And we are pleased to report that an independent financial audit revealed everything to have been in order and that Gorton's revenues now exceed its expenses. So, any concerns or thoughts that may be harbored around the community that money somehow went missing? That's not the case. It just got a little short of cash. So, from a governance point of view, the interim board sees Gorton returning to a structure similar to the model that was established decades ago when Gorton was first set up as a community center. In 1972, the community center was run by a limited paid staff and took full advantage of community manpower, using volunteers for additional staffing. The consensus of the interim board is that Gorton should return to its roots, bringing people together to enjoy the cultural, recreational, and educational activities that are offered. The oversight through the city's existing very strong management infrastructure should be and would be restored in the proposal that we're contemplating, with the executive director reporting to the city manager, overseen by a commission of the city council. The existing 501(c) charitable organization would become the fundraising entity, which for now, we're going to generally are referring to as the foundation, but may have a different name when this is all done. The foundation would be subordinate to the commission and would have its own board, whose duties would be limited to fundraising and other community support. The prior board was responsible for both fundraising and operation of Gorton. And that appears to have been one of the areas where things just, you know, some direction may have been, some additional direction may have been needed, primarily on the business side. But this is similar to the way Gorton was managed from its inception and consistent with the way the senior center is currently governed. And it seems to be an effective process and structure. In those instances, in the prior Gorton structure, prior to its conversion to an independent entity, and in the case of the senior center, this kind of a structure has proven its effectiveness. And it ensures strong managerial oversight while tapping into the tremendous talents and energy of Lake Forest and Lake Bluff residents. Once the situation is thoroughly stabilized, we expect Gorton to be self-sustaining through fees and annual giving that would cover really all expenses, including the executive director's salary. As has been the case in the past, the city would be responsible only for the outside maintenance of the building. Future growth and programming would depend on the extent of support from the community through the foundation and volunteers. And so, the idea is to maintain the status quo relationship between the city and Gorton from a financial point of view, while creating an organizational structure and governance that would ensure that as issues arise, that they're resolved and dealt with promptly. The board has established subcommittees at the next level down to complete in-depth reviews of the operations. The five subcommittees we've created are one for the drop-in center, one for performing arts, programming, and marketing, one for building and facilities and leasing space, one for fundraising, and one for governance. We've really focused mostly to date, while the subcommittees are doing their individual work, as a group, the board has focused primarily on governance, because this seems to be the sort of prerequisite for success going forward, is to get that part right. And we're reasonably confident that we're on the right path there. All those groups are, all those subcommittees are well underway, and we expect each subcommittee to be in a position to make solid recommendations to the new permanent board and staff on schedule by year end. There's a lot of activity at Gorton right now. Programs that are currently running on a sort of weekday basis are bridge, dog obedience, yoga, chess, sewing, fencing camp, mahjong, and the children's theater. And additionally, there are special events and performances for the community by Center Stage and Citadel Theater Groups. Center Stage's recent production of Our Town played to four sellout audiences. Upcoming events, special events include the Red Rose Jazz Band this Sunday, Lake Forest-Lake Bluff Artisans Guild Holiday Boutique, which is, I believe, a week from Wednesday, and the North Shore Symphony Young Musicians Competition. So, there's a lot happening there. And every time I see Nancy, she just sort of bubbles over with 16 new things that I didn't know about that are going on. So, Gorton is truly still, you know, in this transition period, contributing, as it always has, to the community. This past Saturday, the Historical Society hosted local legends in the auditorium with a conversation between Captain James Lovell and Bill Curtis. It was a complete sellout. And this is actually a concept, as we looked at each other at a board meeting recently, this is a concept that the board's programming subcommittee is going to be examining carefully with an eye toward expanding. When you think about the talent and the capabilities and the knowledge that so many of our residents, our fellow neighbors, have, I think we'd all be interested in hearing more from some of those people. And if they were willing to donate some of their time, that could be a very interesting, very sort of homegrown, but really powerful series if it could come to pass. The last, not last, but certainly not least, tomorrow, Gorton's going to be the polling place for the people that vote in that district. And so, people are constantly using the facility. It's being managed carefully and well right now, and we expect to have it ready to go as we go into the new year. There are a number of not-for-profit and other groups that would be new to Gorton that have expressed interest in renting space, both temporarily and for permanent use. And we're energetically pursuing those opportunities. We don't know exactly where they'll all lead at this point, but we're running them all down. Fundraising from the community continues, and there's a year-end effort that's just about to get underway. And a number of local individuals and foundations have indicated their interest in providing ongoing financial support, with the prerequisite that there is a clear direction. And so, that's our immediate mission. The Children's Drop-In Center provides, as needed, part-time daycare for children aged six weeks to six years, allowing parents to volunteer in the community or at schools. The Drop-In Center Parents Board recently raised $80,000 through its annual Oktoberfest and a matching gift campaign. So, that's a very material sum of money for the Drop-In Center. And I think the rallying of support for the Drop-In Center and for Gorton as a whole is pretty apparent. The interim board's on track with our initial timeline, and we expect to complete our work by year end. On November 15th, we're expecting to be able to return here to the city council to present a revised ordinance for your consideration. And at that time, we will also be able to provide more specifics about the recommended organizational structure and a pro forma financial analysis. So, with that said, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Any questions for George?
I just want to comment also, sitting on that committee, how hard the committee, each individual member has taken on their particular job and come back. It's interesting, we're meeting every other week, so if I don't have a council meeting, I'm over at Gorton with George. And it's been a very good experience to see the group pull together, take a look at every aspect, take the good, and adjust to what needs to be changed for improvement, and sort of, again, taking Gorton back to its roots. And I think it'll be very, very successful.
How is, well, I appreciate the governance issue and the importance of getting that back under the city. How do you get comfortable with, you know, creating another city department and the costs that come along with that? You know, we are struggling mightily as a council to deal with pension and benefit issues. And obviously, when we put this, create this as another department, those benefits and pensions, et cetera, are going to be placed on Gorton. Does that concern the committee?
Absolutely. And first, the first thing to do, we think, I think collectively, is to keep the permanent staff to an absolute minimum, which is a big part of going back to the roots that Gorton kind of was originally founded, or the concepts that Gorton was originally founded on. Secondly, our expectation is that these costs can be covered through the fundraising activities with a higher level of focus on those activities. You know, the last piece of this is really where the challenge lies, and that is, you know, we've studied all, we've considered virtually all the options, including just outright shutting Gorton down and mothballing the facility. And, you know, that generally, I mean, we just didn't feel that the city needed another mothballed institution in town. And so, we really said, how can we do this in such a way that the services are provided, but done in a completely responsible way to keep any cost to the city at or below what they've been in the past? Can we guarantee that the city will never be on the hook for anything beyond the building maintenance into the future? Probably not. But the idea is to, I mean, if it doesn't work, first of all, you know, if the approach does- doesn't work, it can be ended. And second of all, it seems critically important, as we've gone back through and looked at where Gorton has come and kind of what happened, if you will, it seems critically important to plug this institution back into this mainstream structure of the city government, to ensure that it's managed professionally from beginning to end. And I think that the staff of the city and the structure and the guidance that the city council provides, and the oversight that a commission would provide, will ensure that attention is paid, and any issues that do arise are dealt with swiftly and surely. And as we considered all the other options, there weren't any other options that would have allowed Gorton to continue to, you know, provide the services it's traditionally provided while ensuring that there wouldn't be another financial problem.
I think I'll just follow up with that as David, last week, George, Bob Kiley, former Alderman Jerry Henry, myself met in the morning to go over these very same topics. And number one, George, I'd say, I was very impressed with the plan that the committee came up with. And number two, David, that comment was expressed about how do we afford if the city is going to play a role as far as management? And I think one of the things I would point out is that this, the private citizens raised $7 million and put that into a city building. That was not city money. That was private money raised by private citizens. And, you know, the thing, the building does not have debt, really. There's very little of anything going forward. It just needed to kind of get its, well, things a little straightened out over there, and I think they've done a great job doing that. And going forward, I think when you have an asset as nice as Gorton Center is, and the kind of money that's already been put into it, and the value of that building and property, I think it makes sense for the city to make sure that we do hire somebody who is going to be able to manage that asset for us. And to that extent, you know, we're going to have to look for, you know, a individual that's capable, and there will be some, you know, money spent on that. But I think the committee felt, and I would echo their feelings, that the community has stood behind this project for many, many years. I think the community will stand behind it going forward, and that we need to protect that asset and get the right people in there to make sure that it's run well going forward as well.
I would just make the comment, though, that life has changed a lot in the last few years, and we are doing everything we can to shed expenses, and this is a big undertaking for the city to take on. And I just think we have to be really sure that we know what we're taking on and that we're going to cover the costs. I think it's important that we see pro formas, and we see a budget, and we see a plan that says this is going to make money, or this is the shortfall, and we're very confident that the city, that this can be raised. Because, you know, the bar, from my perspective, is going to be pretty high. I mean, you know, we sat in a committee meeting, we sat in a town hall meeting last week and pretty much got skewered about the budget, and about how tight everything is, and about how we weren't, you know, we are not, you know, paying enough attention to that. And that is definitely the sentiment that I get from a lot of people. And to sit in here and take on a big project, you know, I want to get a sense of, you know, what obligation are we stepping into? You know, I think that's going to be an important part of the November 15th. You know, what is the opening bogey to pay off whatever's there? Maybe it's nothing, I don't know, but I think we need to get that clear. And then I think we need to have a pretty succinct pro forma and timeline about when we think this thing goes to break even. Maybe it's break even right now. Maybe we have, you know, we've done pre-advanced marketing, the committee has, and, you know, we have dollars coming in. And, you know, obviously, that makes it a lot easier to do. But I think we're going to have to be very wary about a little bit of, you know, if we build it, they will come. Because I think it is a lot harder to raise money today than it was a year ago, three years ago, certainly five or 10 years ago. And again, we're spending a lot of time, as a council and as a finance chair, trying to find every way we can to, you know, cut costs out, and we're taking a giant cost and putting it on the books.
I would dispute your characterization of this as a giant cost. I think you'll see when we present the numbers that it's not a giant cost, and probably, for example, the cost of the executive director, if you just, to mix apples and oranges a bit, if you look at the funds that were raised for the drop-in center, I would guess that that one amount would probably cover the cost of the executive director for a year, you know, fully loaded. So, pretty close, anyway. So, and there may not be any other city employees other than that if we have it, if we can structure it with, if we can structure it legally so that that is the case, that's our intention.
And I think we have to be really sure of that. I mean, when we've tried to structure around other departments where we can outsource stuff or have contract employees, we haven't been able to do that very well.
Yeah, we understand that.
And if this is a model we can use, we ought to start using it in some other departments. But as far as I know, you know, the prevailing wage laws and things like that are pretty tough. So I think we have to be pretty comfortable, from a legal point of perspective, that we can work around that. You know, I know the council, the committee's worked very hard on this. I know this is absolutely a very strong blue ribbon committee, but, you know, I want to be open with some of the concerns I have as I listen to this plan.
Can I ask a quick question? George, first of all, thank you very much for all the work you and the committee have done.
Thank you.
I clearly got the sense that this governance is kind of an interim move that kind of gets things back on its right step. I don't think there's, I mean, I'd be happy to hear from my fellow council members, but I think that, I've heard over the years, that the model that we like is a model similar to ELOA and Ragdale, and not moving toward a city department. So if we have to do that on an interim basis to kind of right the ship, I think that makes a lot of sense, but I wouldn't want to lose sight of the longer-term goal to have it be self-sustaining, privately-run and operated foundation, as you seem to be suggesting. If you could clarify that, because I think that's an important policy distinction here.
That would be good. Unfortunately, the recent experience with Gorton, as a specific example, using that structure was not good. And so while we would love this to be an interim step and get it fully independent from the city once again, of course, it'll never be fully independent of the city because the city continues to own the facility.
Yeah, but we own ELOA, we own Ragdale. These are not, these are models that are successful and they're working.
Right.
And we partnered with them. And I think, and perhaps, David, I'm asking the question a different way than you are, maybe from a more of a policy standpoint, are we in fact, you know, I mean, we then maybe have to make a longer-term decision about what we're willing to support. And this is a follow-on to David's point, that if in fact, you know, he put it in economic terms, I'm putting it in more of a policy term, that, you know, there's certain businesses that we should be in and should not be in. I mean, I don't view the city a core service of being in the drop-in business, not to pick on drop-in, but those are things that maybe we don't need to be in. And I think, at least my point of view, and for the rest of the council, would be is we ought to think about the functionality, the number of people served, and what in fact, we're getting as a benefit for the community. Otherwise, you know, we would be, I mean, I'm wholeheartedly in support of ELOA and Ragdale and the way they're structured, and I think I'd certainly favor this structure as an ultimate goal, and maybe we can't get there for three years or five years. But being the ultimate goal, as opposed to being the ultimate goal that we have another Caraya or a senior services, you know, this is not designed for one group. Those programs are designed for very specific segments of our community that we've made policy decisions to make services for. To have a broad facility just available is a different issue, I think, from a policy standpoint.
Well, I should point out that, I mentioned at the beginning, that Gorton is, right now, the expenses are less than the revenues. So we believe, both operationally and from a financing sort of fundraising point of view, I mentioned before the example of the, and this is a bit of a dream at this point, but it's the kind of thing that I think can really be successful and have very little cost, is this Local Legends concept, or, you know, bringing members of the community together to talk about themselves and what they do, and what, you know, there are a lot of very interesting people in this town. So that's, instead of high-cost, you know, shipping in talent, for example, paying those people, and then hoping we can sell the tickets, which is a, that's a model that just hasn't been working recently. So some of it's operational, some of it's getting additional sources of revenue from tenants, finding ways to utilize the space more efficiently. We're going through the building and looking at redemising spaces and shifting rents around and moving tenants to spaces that maybe fit their immediate needs a little better, and freeing up space for other people to rent. You know, figuring out how to reduce the cost of operating the building on an annual basis by studying things like energy efficiency and, you know, greening up the building a bit. Those things are all being handled at the subcommittee level, and I think when we, and it's happening rather quickly, so we don't, we may not have full and complete input from all of those people or all those subcommittees with numbers attached by two weeks from now. But we should have the core, and we should be able to put together a pro forma that's going to hold together and I think allay some of Alderman Grumhouse's fears.
Let me make another comment. At the end of our agenda today, Bob is going to be talking about core versus elective services. And I think before the baton gets passed on Gorton to the city, that a preemptive analysis of that be done for Gorton. Maybe you've already done that, maybe it hasn't been exactly those words, but something to that effect needs to be done so that we apply to Gorton the same rigor that we have now set up for every other division of the city. It shouldn't be exempted from that. In fact, it should be applied to Gorton before we take it over, if we're going to do that. And that should be done on an annual basis.
That's really the mission of each of the subcommittees, to identify within their sphere, what are the core services, if you will, core facilities, you know, and then what can be either shed or readjusted. I mean, frankly, Bob and Nancy have done a great job of shedding a number of sort of costly and non-revenue-producing activities already, which is one of the reasons why we're actually cash flow positive right now. Despite the fact that the fundraising, because of the interim nature of what we're doing, the fundraising has been spotty. I mean, the drop-in center was able to mobilize their people and do a great job with their event, and I think you'll see a strong fundraising performance as we get into year end. But the uncertainty associated with it is definitely an inhibitor to fundraising, and so we've got to, it's very important, I think, to get to a point where there's a clear sense of where things are going.
I might, just for perspective purposes, remind everybody that the reason we're in the position we are in is because Gorton's doors were closing. And, you know, I want to thank the interim board because I, when I convinced them to be on the interim board, I told them that they only had to work from now until January 1st, or I guess it was July to January 1st. The interim board is not going to have all the answers on November 15th. That was never the responsibility of the interim board. The interim board was to, if you will, right the ship and to at least allow Gorton to continue to function as an important asset in this community, which I think, based on everything I've heard, and I think the board members have heard, is that everybody says we want Gorton to be sustainable. I think that we've looked at a lot of different models, and I think George and John will tell you, is that I was probably the most reluctant one about this coming to the city for, I think, some of the reasons that have been articulated here this evening. But to pick up on Alderman Morsch's point, is probably Gorton, the what we're talking about, is exactly what's happening at ELOA right now, is city staff is running ELOA. But it's city staff that we currently have on board that is doing other jobs, that is filling in, and ELOA is self-sustaining, and it doesn't require any property tax dollars to maintain itself, but the city does have liability for exterior improvements to that property unless we're able to raise funds. And that has been, in the 30-plus years' history of Gorton, the city has had responsibility for the exterior of this building and for the grounds of the building. And we were very fortunate, as Mary Coward pointed out, that the community stepped forward and contributed substantial dollars to renovate that building and expand that building beyond what we have today. I think what we're trying to do is to look at the core elective services that are going on within that building, and even within the different programs that are going on with that building, some are core and some are not core. And I think that's one of the struggles that they're going through right now. But I don't want to get your hopes up and say that you'll have a final detailed plan on November 15th, because that's not what's going to be presented. But it's going to be a plan that is going to allow Gorton to continue to operate, continue to thrive, and, more importantly, continue to work on some of these longer-term issues. And maybe we might move to a Ragdale model, which, you know, I think would be wonderful because basically, we turned the whole property over to them and said, here, it's yours. But I will also tell you that under the current sort of weight in which that building is operating, that there's no group out there that would be willing to take Gorton on in much the same manner. And I think, as George indicated, there was a lot of discussions about what if we just closed the doors? But then, that's an easy decision, because then the question becomes, what do you do with the property? And it is a city liability, whether we like it or not. And so we're trying to struggle as best that we can with this liability and say, how can we prop it up, and how can we get it to a position where it's sustainable and requires little or no, and I would emphasize, no property tax dollars, much the way it's been operating for the last 35-plus years? So I think that's, you know, I just want to try and remind everybody that the interim group is not here to solve all the problems, because, believe me, there are still a lot of issues with tenants, there's a lot of issues with potential tenants. They're not going to be settled in the next two weeks. But these are things that we're working on, and hopefully, we will continue to sustain over a period of time. I think it took ELOA probably five years to get it to a point where it was, you know, able to sustain itself, and not that this is going to take five years, but it could easily take another 12 months.
Well, I could tell you, Bob, that it was very clear to me from our meeting that the work of the interim board and the ability to put the right people in the right places made a huge difference in a very short period of time. So I think that that should also be what George is speaking of going forward, that if you get the right people in the right places, you know, this facility is not in bad shape by any means. It's in very good shape, and the amount of investment that the public has put into this property already, to the tune of seven-plus million or so, and given that it's a city-owned facility, it makes a lot of sense to get the right people in the right place, and I'm sure that's what the interim board is working at right now. So we look forward to hearing from you on the 15th as well, and thank you for all your efforts.
Thank you.
Thanks, George. Well, we're here to talk now about another quasi-governmental agency related to the city, and that's the library board, and Kate Grabby is here to give us an update of things going on at the library. Okay?
I'm just going to cut this really short, because I think we're running very late, and I'm going to just show you some quick things on the website. You all know what we do.
You're going to talk into the microphone.
And we're going to keep doing it for a long time, by the way. Libraries are a great idea.
That's right.
You know what we do. We're busier than ever. We had record-setting years, some of that's a recession. And I would make one comment about Gorton. One of the reasons the Lake Forest Library operates with the small amount of money that it operates with is because there's a lot of things that public libraries in this area do that we don't have to do. One of them is something called adult programming. Gorton does all of that for us. If Gorton didn't exist, there would be pressures through the years for the library to do the kinds of things that Gorton does. Northbrook Library, for example, has an auditorium. Highland Park Library has an auditorium. They do all the things that Gorton does. We don't have to do it. We also don't do things because we have Ragdale and ELOA Farms and the senior center, et cetera, et cetera. So we run a pretty, pretty tight, small organization. The other thing I'd comment on very quickly, you've heard about the lack of state funding for libraries, and it's primarily for systems. The funding from the state that comes directly to the Lake Forest Library is done in a per-capita grant, a very small amount, less, 0.6%, about $20,000 out of a $3.2 million budget. So if that disappears, and we think it probably will, or it'd be cut back, we're not going to even notice it. The thing we're going to miss is the state funding for systems. We're all part of a system. They provide advocacy, continuing education, a number of other things, and delivery of what we call interlibrary loan. When you borrow books from other libraries that we don't have, we don't have to have everything, you borrow- You borrow it from somebody else. We did about 35,000 interlibrary loan items last year. That's a lot. The system is gone for the most part because the state hasn't paid for it. The only thing left is delivery. They did get a couple hundred thousand dollars, which will keep delivery running through January. And then, they expect another 200, which they're going to have to stretch to cover for the next year. So, it's pretty tentative. We're working at ways to cut down the numbers, but it will survive. But, we think that state funding for libraries is pretty much gone. So, let me show you real quickly the website. I just want to show you some new things. Can you hear me if I-
You might have to hold that.
Can I hold it? Oh, I can hold it. I should be just, if we go back to the first, yeah, this is, you just get me, we minimized it if we can go back to the, because I didn't log in. We came over this afternoon and Beth worked with us and we had, we had it just right, but it disappeared from the bottom, so.
Kay, maybe when they're-
We're down here. Yeah, okay. All I'm going to show you real quickly are a few of the things that are new. The library is on Facebook and Twitter and we have a blog. We're coming up on one year for that. We have over a hundred people that watch, that follow us on all of these social networking sites. We feel we're reaching a demographic that we wouldn't reach any other way. A couple of things that I think are really interesting, if we go here. We have something called Ask Away. This is reference service from your home or office and your computer, 24 hours a day, seven days a week, 365 days a year. You, you log in with your library card and you can actually chat online with a reference librarian. Now, the reference librarian is not at Lake Forest. We only put in two to four hours a week on this. But, you're going to be talking to online some reference librarian somewhere. So, this is something that we think is really helpful for people and it's used a lot. We have downloadable materials. Everybody is hearing about digital. You can download ebooks and e-audio books from two services. One is Net Library. That's the oldest one. Another one is called My Media Mall and it's, the service is overdrive. There we go. You can download your iPod, you can download your computer, you can download your MP3 player if you want audio books, if you want ebooks, you can put it on your iPod or anything else that you, that you have.
And you just use your library card to do that?
You, you can come, you come in through the website. And yes, most of the time you do identify yourself with your library card. If you don't have one, you should get one.
I will be coming to see you.
Well, we hope so. We, we have, we, we average about 120 library cards that we issue a month because they do expire. With the recession in this last couple of years, we've been averaging about 175 a month. So, it's, I mean, we have people that never had library cards before. Another thing you can do online is learn a foreign language. This is called Mango. You come in again with your card, you pick your language, and at your convenience, anytime, you can come back to it and you can learn Chinese from home. What else? This is one that we really like. This is called Tutor.com. And, this is homework help for, for kids. And, this is the K through 12 center. It operates from 2:00 in the afternoon till 9:00 at night. You actually go on and you pick your subject, well, we won't do that because I have to log in, we don't want to log in. You pick your subject and you actually will be, again, chatting online with a teacher, a tutor. And there's a whiteboard, you can draw an algebra problem, geometry problem, whatever. It's really neat. The other part of it for adults is a resume help. Oh, we can't get it, so I forget it. You can go on and put your resume on there, get help with a resume and actually talk with somebody about it. So, this is a nice service that we've had for a while, too.
Should I?
Excuse me. The databases that we have, and we have a ton of them, this costs real money for the library. You will not find this on Google. Plus, you will not find any of this on Google. One of the most popular ones is the business one. Morning Star is a really amazing investment analysis tool. Brokers use this. This is one of our most popular services. You can, and you can access this from home. You don't have to come into the library for that. We do have a lot of people that-
Kay, our mayor for a day has a question for you.
Sure.
Yes, for the netbooks, does it also work with Kindles and Uvaters?
No.
All right.
You can download to, like the Sony ebook and the Barnes &amp; Noble, I think it's Nook. Kindle won't play with us. There's a big movement, the American Library Association is pushing them to, to allow libraries to do that. Some libraries are buying Kindles, putting materials on them and circulating them. But, our understanding is that's not legal. And, Amazon has never really said yes or no, so we've stayed away from it. Eventually, they'll understand that we're a market for them and, and we'll get to it. But, right now, you can't download here Kindle. But, that's a good question.
But, it does work with Nooks because I've noticed that when my brother, he has a Nook, he buys the books, they can, they can be pretty expensive. So, I was just wondering if you could also rent them like a library? No, I know you can.
You can, yeah. The Nook you can, and the Sony e-reader too. But, not the Kindle. We'll get there. I think that's, I think that's all the time I'm going to take for you.
Kay, do you want to talk about the new service in the West Side?
Oh, well, all right. I, we'll, we can, we can show you too. Let's, let's see. Last year, I'm going to set it down. Last year I saw, I went to an opening of a library branch in South Elgin, Yale Boarden Library. And they had a, let's see if this is the right one. Yeah. And they had something really fascinating built into the side of the branch. It was a DVD unit that you could access from home, place a hold on a DVD, go to the building, even when it was closed, scan your library card, and then pick up your DVD. It spit it out for you, it spit out a receipt, and you went home. You returned it to the same place. And I thought, at that time, that this would be a wonderful boon for us on the West Side. If you remember, 25 years ago, you promised the community a library branch on the West Side, which has never happened and never should have. But, now, we can provide services remotely. All those, all those things that you can dial in to see. This is called Media Bank. And, this is what it looks like. The classic is the one we have. I talked to Bob about it and he had me talk to Karina, who helped enormously. And, we scouted out a spot in the West Side train station. We've been working with Dan Martin, too, who's been enormously helpful. The city has been wonderful. The city's been the easiest part of this. Our computer co-op, our computer consultants, and some other Comcast and some other ones have been a little trickier. It's, it's in place. The data line is on. The electrical is working. We're putting the final touches on the security systems for our computer co-op because, remember, we're in a co-op with 23 other libraries. And so, we have to guard that information. We think, and then we have to do, they have to put in some more VPNs and a bunch of other things. And then, we think they can do the final testing. We, our technical services people are working with another library in Iowa to, to learn how we actually catalog items that go into this because it's different from what we do now. But, we think we will have it up and running at the latest by the end of the year. We think January 1st is going to be like a rollout, but we think it might be actually functioning before then. The neat thing about it is you can, you can see what we have from home. You can put a hold on it for like five hours. So, then, when you get a chance, you come over and you pick it up. You don't have to stand there and look and see. So, it's like the red box, you all know what the red box is, except it's blue and red. And we also need a catchy name for it. So, if anyone has an idea of what we could call it, let me know. Because, we don't have a name. We don't think we want to call it Media Bank DVD Dispenser. So. And that's our, that's our latest fun thing. Any questions?
Any questions?
Excellent. Lots of new inspiration.
Yeah, I, I didn't want to-
I'll be there to get my car.
I didn't want to tell you about the stuff you already know about.
Very exciting.
Thank you very much, Kay.
Thank you.
And that completes my report for the seat. Oh, you know, I just might add, because I have now two deputy clerks sitting to my right. Remind everybody that it is election day, so if you haven't voted yet, either by mail or early voting, to please stop in tomorrow. It's important that we all exercise our civic duty. So, just want to close on that. And that completes my report.
Thank you, Bob.
The next part of our agenda is, is the council committee reports. First report is finance committee by Alderman Graham House.
Thank you very much, Mr. Interim Mayor. I appreciate it. I just had a quick comment. I'd gotten a couple of questions at the town hall last week about some very specific questions on the finances and I wanted just to give a couple of answers. In terms of current debt outstanding, we have about 43 million of debt outstanding associated with government activities. We have another 25 million associated with business activities. This is essentially the water and sewer fund, which is about 95% of that. And then, the golf course fund is about the remainder. We got some questions about healthcare costs. Our healthcare costs have gone up 4% over the last four years. So, it's not 4% per year, that's 4% total. Part of that obviously has been driven by a lower employee count, but, we're obviously managing those pretty well. From the cost of our policies, our traditional plans have gone up an average of 5% per year. The cost of our choice plans have gone up one, on average of one and a half percent per year over the last four years. For next year, when we looked at the preliminary budget, we were expecting a 10% increase. We got the final quote a few days ago. It's actually only going to be a 2% increase. So, that was a nice piece of news. One, one citizen raised a question about why our costs seem to be much higher than what the BLS statistics were. It's really driven by three things. One is metropolitan location. Healthcare costs in metropolitan locations around big cities are much higher. It's higher risk occupations. We obviously have a lot of police and fire we're covering. And then, lastly, it's retiree coverage. Now, while our retirees pay for their healthcare, they pay it at the regular rate. They don't pay it at a higher rate that a, an older person or a senior citizen would normally pay. And therefore, that puts the cost of our overall costs up higher. So, those are really the three drivers of why we might be higher than the BLS statistics. Lastly, interest. Someone had asked why we had no interest. We do have interest. General fund interest for last year was about $86,000. Essentially, we have our funds invested at the bank and we are getting a 90-day T-bill rate plus 60 basis points, which is pretty darn good. Certainly a lot better than, than I'm doing in my bank account and I'm sure most of, what most people are doing. So, those are just some of the questions that had come up that I didn't have right at my disposal and I wanted to pass them along. And that's all I had from the finance committee report, other than we obviously have our big finance committee meeting on capital budgets in, in two weeks.
Our second report is Report of Housing Trust by Alderman Morsch.
I'll give a, a report on number B and number C, which is, I have no report at this time. I'll wait till the next meeting to update council.
All right. The next one will be a legal committee by Alderman Palmer.
Thank you, Mr. Acting Mayor. The legal committee reviewed the city's options for extending North Shore Gas Company's rights to use the city's right-of-way. After substantial discussion, the legal committee recommends that the city pursue on its own a renewed franchise with North Shore Gas. It would be appropriate for the council to consider the committee's recommendation and direct staff to pursue such franchise and to discontinue participation in the Northern Illinois Gas Consortium. Is that a motion? All right. Do you have a motion to that effect?
So moved.
Second, someone?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. That concludes my report.
All right. The next one is Senior Resources Commission by Alderman Navid.
Thank you, future mayor. Our next meeting is, oh, could be president, but our next meeting is this coming Monday. And I'm looking forward to hearing Paul Lemieux report and his meetings with the representatives from Presbyterian Homes in regard to the neighborhood homes without walls programs. Also, senior center is, well, I seen Peter retire, Marge Burda is getting into her last two months of service to the city. And, yeah, again, there's a lot of people that don't get many pats on the back or appreciation. Marge has been with the city for a long time. And, again, it's going to be another person that's sorely missed when she leaves at the end of the year. But, next meeting is this coming Monday. I'll have something to report back at next council meeting.
Next one is Public Works Committee by Alderman Luby.
Thank you. A motion to replace our mayor with our acting mayor.
So moved. I'm on it here.
Public Works only has-
The motion's out of order.
I died for the lack of a second.
Let's not start that again.
The Public Works Committee only would-
Can I ask you a question on that?
We debate.
We would only like to report that Ever Road and River Woods is, is closed and people please read the signs. There's a lot of traffic that goes all the way down there and has to find a way to turn around and come back. It's amazing how many don't pay any attention to it. Other than that, our roads in Lake Forest are open and operating. So, that's it.
What a report. Thank God.
When is the road reopen?
What's that?
When is it open?
It's supposed to be two weeks, but, yeah. I, I don't know. It'll make it looking at construction.
Can we get an email when the first accident occurs, please?
They're going to have a movie up there on those screens to watch it.
All right. Next one is Transportation Safety and Chancement Committee by Honorable Mayor Cowie.
You got an honorable.
Thank you, soon.
Actually, that wasn't included in-
For the Godfather stuff, because-
I gave him the 10 bucks before the meeting, so. Thank you, soon-to-be Mayor Rocha. I might not make it through the evening the way he's gone. But, I just want to make a couple of quick comments. We spoke about the train safety week, November 1 to 5. That's this week. I did want Karina, though, the one item that we didn't talk about is that we're going to add two shelters to the West Side train station. If you want to give us a real quick on that. And this has to do, number one, with part of safety. That was one of the reasons we believed that folks were, were maybe trying to get across the tracks sooner than anticipated when the train was coming.
Sure. As part of the committee, the committee asked staff to go out to the community to find a company that could provide a bus shelter or some sort of shelter to be at the east side of the tracks. We have, in fact, ordered two bus shelters that would hold five to seven, maybe 10 individuals. They will be placed at the east side of the tracks. Hopefully, the city is working with Conway Business Park to pay for one of the shelters. City staff, Ken Magnus, is assisting me in going out to bid for the cement concrete slabs. Metro has already volunteered to pay for the, or reimburse the city for the concrete slabs. So, that we've placed the order, we should receive the modular shelters within seven to eight weeks and hopefully have the shelters up by the end of December.
Thank you, Karina. And this has really been mostly all of Karina's effort to do this. And you did a great job- And you did a great job, uh, to do it in a very short period of time and to, to get, uh, secure a number of the funds to complete both of these shelters for the West Side. So we thank you for that effort. I'll just conclude my comments.
All right. Comments by council members? All right. Opportunity for public to ex- to address the city council on non-agenda items. Hearing on? Consent agenda?
Thank you. Uh, first item, uh, we'll have three items on the consent agenda this evening is, one, approval of the minutes of October eighteenth, two thousand and ten city council meeting. Two, approval of the authorized invoices and payrolls. And three, the authorization of treasurer's warrants to meet expenses of November twenty-ten. Any questions or comments? If not, it would entertain a motion-
So moved. For approval?
Second.
This is a roll call vote, please.
Alderman Graham House.
Aye.
Alderman Navid.
Aye.
Alderman Woodman.
Aye.
Alderman Moore.
Aye.
Alderman Morse.
Yes.
Alderman Schonhider.
Aye.
Alderman Luby.
Aye.
Alderman Palmer.
Aye.
A E As, no nays, motion carries.
Thank you, Catherine. I have to, I have to get in the habit of saying Catherine instead of Beth now, so. It'll take me a while. Uh, next on the agenda is ordinances. The first one being a consideration of report and a recommendation from the zoning board of appeals to grant variances from the side and front yard setback requirements at six-nine-three Spruce Avenue. First reading, and if desired by city council, final approval, presented by planner Megan O'Neil.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, um, Mayor for the Day Rocha and members of the council. Um, just to orient you to this petition, the Burke residence is on Spruce Avenue. It is on the south side of Spruce, two properties west of Lake Road. Um, the property is within the historic district, but it is not a contributing structure to the district. The existing house is a one-story residence. And on September twenty-ninth, uh, the owners petitioned the zoning board of appeals, uh, for a variance to allow construction of a second floor addition, um, above the existing walls. The proposed, uh, second floor addition is built, as I said, on, over the existing walls with the exception of a small area, um, right here where they're extending, um, a, a small front porch towards the street. This project does comply with the thirty percent lot coverage requirements. It also re- um, complies with building scale requirements. The variances that are before you this evening, um, are for, um, encroachment into the, uh, both side yards as well as the front yard. I'm going to show the, um, front elevation. Just because I think this, this image actually shows the extent of the, of the variance that was requested. The majority of the addition, um, here in the center, actually complies with zoning requirements. Um, the area of encroachment is really just this roof form on either side, um, as, as shown. At no point does the addition encourage further than the existing structure. Um, the hardship in this case is that a city initiated zone change from the R-two district to the R-four district since the house was built. Um, and the zoning board, um, viewed that as, um, warrant for support of the, of the variance. Uh, this project was reviewed by the Historic Preservation Commission. A certificate of appropriateness was issued on October twenty-seventh. Um, there is no opposition presented to either the zoning board or the Historic Preservation Commiss- Commission regarding this request. Um, and there was a unanimous vote to recommend approval to the council of the variances, um, in the ordinance that are found on page seventeen of the council packets.
I'll make a motion to wait first reading.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Uh, roll call vote, please.
Alderman Graham House.
Aye.
Alderman Navid.
Aye.
Alderman Woodman.
Aye.
Alderman Moore.
Aye.
Alderman Morse.
Aye.
Alderman Schonhider.
Aye.
Alderman Luby.
Aye.
Alderman Palmer.
Aye.
A E As, no nays, motion carries.
Thank you, Catherine. Our next item on the agenda is a consideration of report and a recommendation from the zoning board of appeals to grant the variance from the lot-in-depth setback requirements at one West Owensia Road. This is also a first reading, and if desired by the city council, final approval. Megan O'Neil will present as well.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. Um, this is another variance request. Um, this particular item, um, was seen at the zoning board's October twenty-fifth hearing. Um, is located on, on Owensia Road, um, on the south side of the street. And as you can see from the vicinity map, the property is actually set back behind this front lot and accessed from on Owensia Road by a narrow strip of land. Um, this type of lot is classified as a lot-in-depth, um, where the access area is less than the minimum lot width required, um, for ingress and egress. Um, as required by, uh, by code, lots-in-depth take the front yard setback for the district and apply it to all four sides of the property. In this case, the property is located within the R-four district and therefore requires a fifty-foot setback on all sides. Um, when the house was built in nineteen seventy-eight, it complied with the setbacks that were in place at the time. In nineteen seventy-nine, a year later, um, the city initiated a zoning amendment, um, that increased the setback requirements for lots-in-depth. The home is now non-conforming with respect to the fifty-foot setback on the east side. Show you a bigger picture here. So as a result of, of this amendment, um, this small infill, um, project on the east side, uh, requires a zoning variance. Um, at no point will the addition encroach beyond the line of the existing house. Um, this project also, um, complies with the thirty percent lot coverage requirements. Um, there were no other variances requested in terms of building scale, um, only the east side setback variance. Uh, there was one letter of support signed by four property owners submitted to the zoning board. Um, and the zoning board unanimously recommended to approve the requested variance. Um, I believe this ordinance is found on page twenty-nine of your, um, council packet. And the recommended action is to wait first reading and grant final approval. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Motion to wait first reading.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Uh, roll call vote, please.
Alderman Graham House.
Aye.
Alderman Navid.
Aye.
Alderman Woodman.
Aye.
Alderman Moore.
Aye.
Alderman Morse.
Aye.
Alderman Schonhider.
Aye.
Alderman Luby.
Aye.
Alderman Palmer.
Aye.
A E As, no nays, motion carries.
Thank you. Our next item on the agenda is consideration of an ordinance amending chapter thirty-eight subdivisions of the city code. This is for final approval, presented by the Director of Community Development, Kathy Cerniak.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, uh, Mayor for the Day Rocha and members of the council. Uh, at your last meeting, you did grant first reading of, um, an amendment to the city code which would adopt, um, essentially of an updated chapter thirty-eight of the subdivision chapter. Uh, the plan commission has been working on this, um, update for about eighteen months. Uh, they have held four public hearings on it. Um, for the most part, the subdivision chapter has not been updated, uh, since about nineteen forty-six, uh, most of the chapter. Uh, no substantive changes either, uh, from the plan commission or, or since your last, uh, meeting. Um, just real quickly, there was language cleanup, reorganization of the entire chapter. Some definitions were added for clarity. Uh, the opportunity to request a variance from subdivision provisions was clarified. Application requirements were included in the code. That's what we have done for Building Review Board and Historic Preservation Commission. That has worked well, to be clear on, uh, to set clear expectations. The process of tentative and final subdivision was clarified and detailed. Public notice requirements were added into the code. Currently, they're just on the application. And the design standards were updated. Uh, this comes to you with unanimous recommendation from the plan commission. And if you choose to do so, it will be appropriate to grant final approval.
Motion to grant final approval?
Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Alderman Graham House.
Aye.
Alderman Navid.
Aye.
Alderman Woodman.
Aye.
Alderman Moore.
Aye.
Alderman Morse.
Aye.
Alderman Schonhider.
Aye.
Alderman Luby.
Aye.
Alderman Palmer.
Aye.
A E As, no nays, motion carries.
Thank you, Catherine.
The next item is new business, bu- business, sorry. First on the agenda, consideration of actions relating to proposed changes to the senior cottage program.
Um, as the council knows, we met earlier in, uh, executive dis- uh, session to discuss. And I'd like to propose a motion based on that. Uh, the motion would authorize a loan from the city's general fund to the Lake Forest Senior Cottage Foundation. A loan from the city's general fund for a period of six months in the amount of thirteen thousand dollars under the same rate of interest as a loan approved by the Ragsdale Foundation. And to direct the city manager in consultation with the director of finance and the city attorney to effect the closing on such loan on an expedited basis. And for the, the housing trust be directed to review alternative strategies for enhancing long-term sustainability of the senior cottage development on Conray Road in discussion with Lake Forest Bank and Trust, Presbyterian Homes and other, uh, entities as necessary. With the housing trust reporting back to the city in sixty days.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Uh, roll call vote, please.
Alderman Graham House.
Aye.
Alderman Navid.
Aye.
Alderman Woodman.
Aye.
Alderman Moore.
Aye.
Alderman Morse.
Aye.
Alderman Schonhider.
Aye.
Alderman Luby.
Aye.
Alderman Palmer.
Aye.
A E As, no nays, motion carries.
Thank you, Catherine.
Next on the agenda is a report on no cell phones in a school zone law presented by Police Chief Joseph Berger. Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the city council. Uh, there have been some, uh, questions recently about the ban on cell phones. And I know I've talked to a couple of the Aldermen. And I just wanted to take a few minutes to go over the law. First of all, um, a school zone is denoted by the signs that are posted on the streets bordering the schools. Generally, the schools, uh, the school zones are in front of the schools or where the children are picked up. The school speed limits, which the signs denote, the school speed limits are in effect on school day is when children are present. Generally, the police department, um, feels that a school day for the purpose of the grade schools is anytime between eight AM and four PM. So during this time, a driver of a vehicle traveling on the roadway, let's use Deer Path as an example, in front of the schools, cannot be on their cellphone unless the driver is using a hands-free device. So either a hands-free device through the vehicle or a Bluetooth or something like that. The other thing that we've done, uh, to remind drivers, we've done some extra enforcement, uh, twice in front of the high school and twice here on Deer Path back in September. And what we did was, we had an officer standing out in the middle of the road. And if somebody was on their cellphone as they drove by, they were asked to pull over. And we wrote that driver a warning, just as a, as a reminder, as I said. The other thing that we've done is I've had the school resource officer, especially at Deer Path, hand out information to the drivers waiting in line to remind them not to use their cellphones in the school zones. So I can answer any questions that you may have.
I have a question.
Sure, go ahead.
All right. You should, sometimes after school, um, I, I have to be picked up a little later. Am I allowed to use my cellphone or is it only the people with the drivers?
No, it's only drivers, not people who are waiting to get picked up. But that's a very good question.
All right, thank you.
Are you driving already?
If you're in line picking your child up and it's a long carpool line, you're not, even if you're in a parking lot, you're not allowed to be using the cellphone, is that correct?
That's correct. Once it, it's a little bit different. If you're on the street, then no. If you're in back in the school, then technically you're not on a city street, but we discourage their use there also.
An, an example, though, would be at Sheridan School in the afternoon.
Mm-hmm.
They're all lined up on Sheridan Road. They're all, it's just a mess out there. They're all on their cellphones. Um, they should not be on their cellphones, I take it, even though some of them said, well, we're kind of parked on the side of the road so we can be talking.
Doesn't matter as long as they're, as long as they're on that city street, Alderman.
You need some information to go out there.
Sure.
And a bigger, and a bigger sign. Those little signs are really pretty small.
We've worked with the schools and put out some information, but we can do it again.
But I, yeah, I go by there every so often and, um, they're all on the cellphone down, down the street.
We could do what the city of Chicago did and just eliminate cell phone use without a hands-free device for the whole city. That way, we don't have to worry about all the boundaries in the world.
That's correct. You would not have to.
But just to define, if your car is at stop in park and you're calling your child to ask them to come out, you can't be on your cellphone?
That's correct.
Oof.
Unless it's hands-free.
Okay.
You know, I have an observation, uh, um, early in the morning. I, I left a message on this and, um, I was driving my son to high school, my, my two boys to high school, uh, for the first month or so of school. And, um, all the pedestrian traffic is really, it seems to be occurring between seven fifteen and eight o'clock.
A little bit earlier at the high school.
At eight o'clock, everyone's in the class and you'd be much safer to use your cellphone, albeit illegal. And, um, I think the spirit of law would really drive more toward the seven o'clock to eight o'clock period when the kids are actually in the street crossing and-
I think you're probably right for the high school, Alderman.
Is that, uh, who, who's, uh, who's determining the eight o'clock for school hours?
The police department can determine the school hours. And generally, we follow, you know, the grade school hours, although, uh, we can change it for the high school for their school zone.
I, I think that'd be a great idea for the high school.
Mm-hmm.
Seven o'clock to, and they're all, at four o'clock, they're gone, so.
And that's the same way it is with the grade schools. By four o'clock, they're usually all gone.
I think it'd be a big help for safety. I've seen a lot of close calls, a lot of brakes slammed on, it's, uh-
But it's only where there's signs, right?
That's correct. It's only-
So, I mean, I don't think there are any signs around St. Mary's.
Actually, th- there is. I just noted a few, I just noticed it a few weeks ago. This little sign when you're pulling in. And my mom pointed it out to me, like, look, there's a sign. I was like, whoa, I've never noticed that, so.
Mm-hmm.
I think that the sign should be a little bigger, maybe with some lights on it to get some more attention.
Well, that's a fine idea. And we'll send that to the Traffic Safety Committee.
And, uh, actually, I have two questions.
Sure, go ahead.
First of all, um, what if you're in the parking lot? Because for my school, you have to par- if you're early, you can park in the parking lot? Can you talk while you're in the parking lot?
Yes, you can.
And also, what if, what if you're caught while talking on the cellphone? Is there a fine or you could go to jail or something?
Actually, you probably don't have to go to jail, but we would probably write you a ticket.
All right. Just to know.
Any other questions?
Uh, yeah.
Sure.
Are mayors for a day exempt from curfew regulation? Hypothetical.
He still has a little bit of time, Alderman.
Only when city council keeps talking.
Just wondering.
Any other questions?
Other questions?
You're welcome.
Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. All right. Next on the agenda is a report on Google Shopping presented by Economic Development Coordinator Susan Kelsey. Is that correct?
Yes.
All right, thank you.
And movie star.
And movie star.
Good evening, Acting Mayor and Mr. Mayor, City Council. Um, tonight's presentation is on a new internet program, but, um, the city manager asked me to add some other slides to it to talk a little bit about some of the issues that were addressed at the town hall meeting last week. And the first slide that comes, maybe, the first slide that comes up will have a few photos of the, the weekend celebration. It was Haunted Square and Market Square, compliments of Steve Valenti with, um, All Things Party. We'll talk about that in a minute. But what I wanted to talk about tonight was really, um, give an update to the community about the current status. Describe some of the activities that are supporting our economic development activities, preview some upcoming events and give you a short summary. Of course, we all know the last twenty-four, thirty-six months have been tough, but I just wanted to remind that it's been tough for our businesses. We do have some businesses that have reported that hours go by with not one customer walking in their store. It's been a rough couple of years compounded with some of the construction that's going on. But, um, we're through all that now. They, they are feeling hopeful. Their, actually, second quarter results are about even where second quarter was last year, so we're moving forward. The strategy has really been to focus on providing business assistance to these businesses during the last twenty-four, thirty-six months during the recession. Um, really focus on a shop local campaign, introduce some low-cost or even free internet marketing programs to work with the property owners on their own investments and reinvestments into their properties, to go out and attract some new businesses. Go to the other communities and ask businesses that they want to expand into Lake Forest. Um, and help existing businesses maybe relocate within the community or expand.[1779.61] the community or expand, and then generate some buzz with some special events, which is what the Halloween event did last weekend. So just a quick summary, in the CBD district, which runs from Deer Path over to Westminster, Western over to Forest, one hundred and ninety-six businesses total. Of that, forty percent of them are retail or food, sixty percent are non-retail. If you remember from Michael Hanlon, Chair of the CBD Group a couple of months ago, he said that's really the inverse of what most communities have. Number of new stores, just in 2010, we got four new stores, number of stores lost, one, so we're netting three. And we are constantly, the city's going out and looking at how we can recruit some businesses that want to add additional locations to their business. So one of the strategies, shopping local, you know, one of the questions asked at the town hall meeting is, what are people doing? And there's so many activities going on on a number of fronts by a number of people and organizations. Lake Forest Bootery just started an event called First Fridays, from six to eight, music, some food, trying to get some of the stores to stay open a little bit later. They also have a store in Libertyville, and Libertyville is a Main Street organization, and they've brought that over here to Lake Forest. District sixty-seven is organization, has started their own shop with Spirit Campaign, working with all of our local retailers to encourage people to shop locally. We're about to embark on a campaign with North Shore Communities called Due North, it's led by Ravinia, and the Metro train to get communities from Evanston up to Lake Forest to use Metro and bring conventioners up from Chicago or people visiting for board meetings to come up on the Metro. District sixty-seven has been annually working with the Grill, and the Grill has discounted their rates to get residents to support the home tour, but also the restaurant. The Infant Welfare Home Tour, every other year, this event brings in over fifteen, twenty, about twelve to fifteen thousand people over a two-week period. And so we want to work with them to see how we can get those people to stay a little bit longer in Lake Forest. Lake Forest Made is a program celebrating our local artists. We just became members of the National Trust for Historic Preservation, they have twenty-five-hundred communities across the country, they're Main Street communities, with best practices, models, tools in their toolkit that we want to look at. And we just finished our fiftieth taping of Inside Lake Forest, so our fiftieth taping will be celebrating it by revealing fifty secrets of Lake Forest, and we will build on those for one hundred and fifty secrets for next year. We also, part of the strategies is working on the internet and social media, there's so many things available, if you go just to the Google search page to Google Business Solutions, there's fifteen programs in there for any small business that are free or maybe low cost. So you can see in this example, Southgate Cafe went to Google, they've identified themselves as the owner of that address, and so they have their place page, so they have a balloon on Google. So if you are using a mobile device, if you're using the Google search engine, and you put in Southgate, it pops up, and especially if you're using a mobile, a smartphone, like something like an iPhone or Android, you can plug in directions, it'll take you right there. But the beauty of this is it has a viral marketing feature to it, it has twenty-eight reviews, they have all, I think it's five or six stars, and it's all peer-reviewed. The other thing, we're working with our businesses this summer, we tried the coupon book last summer, we want to go green this summer, so we've asked all our businesses not only get their Google place page, but go on and get their coupon. And this is a coupon offered by Total Cleaners, Jewels of Lake Forest is on there too, you can actually walk in there with your coupon on your mobile phone, and they'll accept that. And then we're also preparing all kinds of signs for all of our local businesses of these QR codes, very simple, you take a picture of it with your camera on your smartphone, and this one is the City of Lake Forest website. So once the city has a mobile application, it'll go right to the website, you can pay your bills online, you can get directions to City Hall, whatever. We had a seminar last week with Jim Rodney, and we had, I think, about seventy or eighty businesses that attended the seminar, the city sponsored it, and it was really all about, step by step, how do you as a business go about getting yourself on the internet, and then tying it all together with Facebook and directing all your traffic around to each other. And the more you link to Facebook, YouTube, LinkedIn, Twitter, it helps in what they call your search engine optimization, your SEO. And so that's really what we're trying to do with our local businesses, for all these low-cost or even free methods to get them on the internet. Another initiative is reaching out, working with property owners with their investments in their buildings. After the completion of Western Avenue, there's a number of property owners that have started on their market, or their own maintenance, you probably have noticed the painting of the Market Square Towers, Mayor Rommel met with that property owner and has an exciting program to roll out at the city's one-fifty. All along Western Avenue, there's property owners that are updating their streetscape, benches, awnings, plantings. We have some requests now for signage, to update some of the signage and lettering that's on some of the buildings, trying to, I think, you know, the investment in the capital infrastructure in the street, now the property owners are starting to invest in their property. And we're also working with them on parking permits for their employees to keep them out of customer parking spaces. At the town hall meeting, they said, "What else is going on?" So this is what the city council has been up to for the last twenty-four, thirty-six months. As you know, the CBD advocacy group was appointed by Mayor Rommel two years ago, they've had number of meetings, about every three months, they came back with five recommendations, and we've been working on implementing those recommendations. Kathy Cerniac is working on streamlining the processes, we have a new business that's opening up in the next week or two, her department hand-walked the business right through. I sent an email, they're on their way over, they met them at the desk, hand-walked them right through. Capital infrastructure, you know, Mayor Cowie addressed that at the town hall meeting, of course, the streetscape, trees, planters, lighting. Each year, the chamber invites not only the mayor of the Lake Forest, but the city manager of Lake Forest to address their meetings, so there's a regular dialogue that goes on with the businesses. Earlier this year, a window display program was initiated, asking the business owners to pull the brown paper off their windows, decorate the windows, do something, and a couple of properties on Deer Path have taken advantage of that, they're using some former exhibits from the Historical Society, and talking about the golfing exhibit that they had at Lasker. And finally, we're working on some city signage. Often, we get comments from people that come to Lake Forest on the weekends and don't know their way around, so we're trying to find some ways to get them to find bank lane. We're getting near the end, so event marketing, it's really our goal to create some buzz, and we have been examining other communities. Libertyville has their Main Street program, they spend about three hundred thousand dollars a year doing three hundred events. We often hear, "Why can't we do more like Libertyville?" So Chuckie Landers, he runs the Market Square Merchants, they do some events, they do some at Easter and Mother's Day. This actually started last year with Bruce Southworth, he started the following Santa event, will be doing it again this year, December eleventh. Bruce also helped with the Western Avenue grand reopening. The Preservation Foundation, they started, I think it's, they just held their second year, the nineteen sixteen Family Fair in Market Square, ten cent popcorn, ten cent snow cones, the kids love it, I think they had about six hundred kids last time. And Gorton will be having their holiday shop on December eighth from two to six, there's a number of retailers that will be participating in that. But what was really exciting was this Haunted Square this last weekend. This was a brainchild of Forest Bootery, they came to the chamber in the city, and they said, "We want to do something for Halloween," so we went around to all the stores and said, "What will you do, what will you do, what will you do?" And Steve Valenti, who has an office in Market Square and runs a business, All Things Party, came to us and said, "Can I do something on the green?" And I thought it was spectacular, if any of you got a chance to walk by it, it was all sponsored by him, he did a nice job, and we look forward to working with him on the Christmas holidays. So what's coming up, tree lighting ceremony, our traditional tree lighting ceremony is Friday on the twenty-sixth, and that really launches the city's one-fifty celebration. We are opening the North Pole Express, which will be at the train station on the north end where the Northern Trust Base was, we'll have a mitten tree there, if you want to donate some mittens to families that don't have any, we'll have hot chocolate, candy canes, we'll have a community board of everything going on for the holidays, all the holiday specials at all the different businesses. We've got over twenty or twenty-five vintage photos from Lake Forest, old winters, ice skating photos from Onwensia, and we have a couple of new retailers that are interested in moving to Lake Forest, and they'll have their tables there and test the market a little bit. Starting on November twenty-seventh all the way through December, we'll have four Saturdays of Santas, he'll be roaming from Southgate Patio, I think the fire truck will bring him in on December eleventh, and then again, the Gorton Holiday Shop, and then on December eleventh is kind of the big, the big day, when we bring in some live reindeer on Market Square, and if you haven't seen these little guys, they're adorable, and we'll coordinate all the merchant activities with it. So I'm pretty much done with the rest of the year, we've been focusing on 2011, and what's happening for 2011. Lake Forest College contacted the city of Lake Forest and said, "We need better communications and better working relationships," and I see, actually, Matt is here. Matt went and started a committee at Lake Forest College, intergovernmental relations between the city of Lake Forest and Lake Forest College, he will be chairing it, he's going to be attending all of our city council meetings and reporting back. But we sat down with a couple of high school students and college students and said, "What can we do? What would be of interest to the community that we could work on jointly and get some movement going?" And we came up with the idea of environmentalism, that we don't do a whole lot in Lake Forest about the environment, and if you lived out in the Northwest, you know, your lives revolve around the environment out there. So we're focusing on Earth Week, we'll kick it off with Arbor Day with the mayor planting the first of the one hundred and fifty trees, and then we'll do some geocaching.
That's why he needs a temporary mayor with him.
Geocaching for gardens, I didn't know Lake Forest Garden, or Lake Forest College had a garden, and so we want, for those that want to participate, we'll do some geocaching. And we have a resident that wants to do a bike ride from square to square, Deer Path Square to Market Square. Gorton has opened up the auditorium for a movie on Wally on Earth Day, and Lake Forest College will be designing T-shirts and selling them, so. And that will launch our new farmers' markets, so that will start in June, July, August, and September for four months, every single Saturday. I found the busiest corner we had in Lake Forest, it's Deer Path and Western, right at the train station parking lot, and we will have markets, our farmers from Michigan, Illinois, and Wisconsin attending. And then the other things, all throughout the whole year, the one hundred and fifty celebration, we'll be working toward the final event, Labor Day, with the taste of Lake Forest, of the twenty-two restaurants, about eleven of them have already signed up, and it's just because I haven't gotten to the other eleven yet, and we'll tie in merchant activities. So this is the last slide, it's basically, you know, the answer to the town hall question is, "What are we doing?" Well, I think it takes a lot of partners to do this, and we've got the city of Lake Forest, the property owners are getting involved, the chamber, local businesses, local nonprofit organizations, residents are coming and saying, "I have an idea," and regional partners like the North Shore Consortium, and all of us together, working on business recruitment, retention, shopping local, and using the internet free programs, and really focusing more on some special events. That's it.
Thank you, Susan, and obviously, you've done an awful lot of work, and you're working very hard, not only this year, but next year. One question I have for you, though, is, how do we get this information out to the public? I think, obviously, there's a lot going on, but a lot of people may not be getting that message, so how do we get this effectively to the residents of Lake Forest and the other communities that may want to come in and join these types of activities as well?
Yes, we've been working at City Hall to put together a kind of a checklist of all the things that we need to do to publish the information. Actually, there was a slide, skip the Facebook page, the city launched a Facebook page six months ago, we already have six hundred fans. It's growing by, you know, the students learning about it and telling their friends about it, and the things that kind of pick up steam on that are the things that they take pride in, like the recent article in the Wall Street Journal about Lake Forest being the most walkable city in the top-ten list. So we're using things like Facebook, things that are easy to do with a push of a button, but the community boards work well, the dialogue letter works better, so we're putting together the checklist, and we need to do a better job communicating everything that everybody's doing.
Well, to answer your question, Mr. Cowie, it's just a suggestion, but I'm not sure if you'll do this, but maybe create a Lake Forester, and like a cover page, like agenda for new stuff in Lake Forest, and you could do this, and then you could point it out, and then do a other thing where you can, like, buy, I don't know, like a Lake Forest bookshop, like an agenda, you could print out or something, I don't know, just an idea.
I think we've got a job for you, Mikey.
Great.
Now, Susan, for those who didn't appreciate it, this Saturday in Market Square with the Halloween promotion, then, over at Gorton, where the parking lot was filled with people going to see Bill Curtis and Commander Lovell, it was a perfect day as far as marketing in Lake Forest, and it was everything our town can be, and I just appreciate your efforts in getting this going and showing what can be done. So these programs are great, I think we need more of them to get through in the next year, so, appreciate it, Saturday was wonderful.
Well, if residents have ideas, businesses have ideas, bring forward, and we'll see what we can do to get them done.
Thank you. Thank you, Susan, very well done.
Is he coming back next week?
Mm-hmm.
We can add him.
He's got a regular spot here for him, huh?
Thank you.
He's smarter, he's cuter, you know, I mean, what more can you add?
All right.
Just relax.
Next on the, I know. I know. Next on the agenda is a report on core slash elective services and performance measurements, presented by city manager Robert Keely.
Thank you, Mr. Acting Mayor and Mr. Mayor and members of City Council. I will make this very brief, this is more of an introduction to what we're going to be talking about, a lot more detail here in two weeks, which is the FY-12 budget, which is just around the corner. You recall last year, as a part of our budget process, we went through a very, some might say, exhausting process of defining the services within the city of Lake Forest as either core elective services. Included in your packet is an update of that, the city staff went through and looked at those again, analyzed them, and basically, there's only three modifications with respect to the core elective services that you talked about last year. One in the fire department moving the open house, fire open house to an elective service, in the police department breaking out the CSO work into parking enforcement versus some of the other ancillary works that they do, and then transferring the forestry section into parks and rec from public works. The second part of the report, and one that probably within three weeks, you're going to see, a first six months of the performance measurement program that we implemented as a part of this year's budget as well, is where we're beginning to collect data and information with respect to some of the programs and services that we provide, to really get some analysis, or get some data that we can analyze, what's happening with the various services, and helping to really track where our limited resources are going, and making sure that we're able to allocate our resources in the most efficient way that we possibly can. You'll notice in there, in the material in your packet, that not only have we identified approximately five to ten for each department, but then we've looked at those, whether they're related to, back to the core elective services, and then the actual numbers. The draft that you have in your packet does not have the numbers, only because since we just completed the month of October, once we have the data from October, we'll be able to give you a full report for the first six months of the fiscal year for FY-11. But I'd ask that you take a look at that, if there are any measurements that you think that are critical for you to make some budgetary decisions, please feel free to let me know, and we can look at those. This is going to be a very fluid and dynamic process, as I told the staff, we're not collecting data just for the sake of collecting data, we want to make sure that we're collecting data that is relevant to making important decisions, budgetary decisions, that the staff and the city council need to make on an annual basis, because as we've known, and we've talked earlier this evening, that resources are continuing to get tighter and tighter, and we want to make sure that, well, we can't do everything that we've done in the past, that we're doing the most important things that we're doing, that we should be doing in the community, and also making sure that we have good data to back up if we're going to be making modifications, that we can go to the residents, we can go to the businesses, we can go to others, and say, "This is why we're making some of the changes that we're making." So I just put it out there, I know it's late, and probably don't want to go over either one of these documents in great detail, we can talk about them further at the December fifteenth meeting if you'd like, but if you have any further thoughts, ideas, additions, deletions to either the core elective or the performance measurements, please feel free to let me know. And with that, I'll answer any questions that anybody might have. Or if not, I'll see you all on the fifteenth.
Any additional items for council discussion?
Yes, I move that we express our appreciation for the leadership that our mayor for the day has shown.
Thank you.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Ladies, welcome back anytime.
Permission for adjournment?
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Getting adjourned. Getting adjourned? Thank you.